We're all just a mayor.
Okay, thank you. Hi, good evening. Welcome to the city council regular meeting for March 5th, 2024.
Mayor, I have an announcement from the closed session this afternoon. So earlier this afternoon, the city council in a closed session to discuss five separate items identified on the agenda. They gave direction with respect to four of the five. On the fifth item, it's the Chill the Build lawsuit at the, it's a housing project at the Verandahs' site. The Chill the Build dismissed their lawsuit with prejudice. The court documents are public records and available to the public, and there'll be a press release to follow. So that's the only announcement on Chill the Build. And, and that's the entire announcement for the closed session.
Mr. City Attorney, I think I should make an announcement with regard to my recusal from one of the items. In the Thompson versus City of Manhattan Beach matter, I recuse myself, not because I have a financial interest in the litigation, but because the plaintiff has been assisting me with a matter related to the city at no cost, but I just felt it was appropriate to recuse myself. Thank you.
Okay, great.
At this time, be appropriate to adjourn the closed session, 5:00 session.
Okay, so the closed session is adjourned, and now we welcome you to the city council regular meeting for March 5th, 2024. Could we have the pledge to, pledge of allegiance? We are have-
Oh yeah, sorry. My mistake. Good job, Mr. Mayor.
Was that on? Was that recorded?
Yes.
Thank you for your help. As we said, this is not my first rodeo. So we've got the pleasure to have Miracosta student Claire Kerber join us along with the Miracosta principal, Karina Gerger.
Wave your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, well, thank you so much. That's terrific. So tell us a little bit about yourself and your studies at Miracosta.
Hi, everyone. I'm Claire Kerber. I'm a senior at Miracosta. I play for the Miracosta soccer team and lacrosse team. In this fall, I ran cross country, and I run the green team at Miracosta, so I've gotten really involved in everything Miracosta has to offer.
Well, thank you so much. We're fortunate to have you between all those activities. And I think, Karina, you have some words to say?
Absolutely. It's my honor. Okay, so a little bit about Claire. Claire is an amazing young lady who soars academically, philanthropically, socially, and athletically. Her outstanding leadership qualities are reflective in all that she pursues. Claire has maintained focus during her time at Miracosta. She has taken a rigorous course load while maintaining a 4.4 GPA. She is known to be heavily involved with Model United Nations at Costa. She was chosen to be the Economic and Social Council Under-Secretary General, where she assisted in running the Costa MUN program, as well as organized the 29th Annual LAMEN at Costa, and that is the largest local MUN conference in our region. Claire has also traveled and competed representing Costa MUN, winning multiple awards. Claire also has a passion for philanthropic work, which is noted in her presidency of, as the Miracosta Green Team, presidency of the Miracosta Green Team. She works enthusiastically to promote environmental sustainability in our school and in our local community. She organized an annual community-wide clothing swap, implemented a recycling program at Costa, and participated in the Grades of Green Rise campaign, winning eco grants for our Meatless Monday social media campaign and our Ban the Bottle campaign. Claire's passion and dedication to protecting our environment is a testament of who she is. Also a varsity athlete, Claire played soccer at Costa and is on a club team as well. She's off to practice after this, as well as Costa lacrosse and cross country. Claire's goal is to attend a university where she plans to study life sciences, biochemistry, possibly biochemistry, public policy, either environmental or health, and the Spanish language, with the intent of studying abroad in a Spanish-speaking country. Claire is an avid user of Duolingo, which she absolutely loves, clocking over 1,000-plus days, reaching the Diamond League, which is the highest honor in the app. I have to say, give me in. Claire can be described as enthusiastic. She shared that she always tries to approach everything she does with a positive attitude, and she is always genuinely interested in learning, interacting with people, and gaining new experiences. She will continue to have this can-do attitude and be excited to take on new challenges in her life. We hope for a wonderful life journey for Claire and can't wait to hear what she accomplishes in the future. We are honored to recognize Claire Kerber as the City Council Student of the Year for Miracosta High School.
Can you introduce us to your family?
Well, first of all, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Over here is my mom, Katie, my dad, Fred, and my sister, Allison.
I think we might see her in the future up here as well, sitting in one of these chairs, but thank you for doing this. So I want to present to you a certificate of recognition for your outstanding citizens, on behalf of me and my council colleagues, for outstanding citizenship in the Manhattan Beach Unified School District.
Thank you so much. And we have a city, we have a city pin, and I took it out of its plastic bag for you since you're, you know, president of the Green Club, so, yeah.
So we're gonna have a photo.
Okay, so-
You've been a salon, you want to go by?
Yeah, looks great. All right, ready, everyone up here? Nailed it. Good job. Thank you.
Great.
Mom and Dad, you got that?
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Oh, Mom and Dad, you guys, picture.
Well done. Thank you, Claire.
I always feel lazy after meeting students like that. Okay, so could I, at this point, I'd like to ask any veterans of the armed services, if there's any here in the, in the chamber, I'd like for you to stand, and so we can acknowledge you, please. Chief, we can give him a round of applause. Thank you for your service. Okay, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Lesser.
Here.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Howarth.
Here.
Mayor Franklin.
Here, thank you. And colleagues, if we could have a, an approval of the agenda and waiver of full reading, your order says, a motion?
I'm gonna register a no on number six, consistent with previous votes.
And I would like to pull, I will be pulling item number four from the consent calendar.
Item number four.
But we're not pulling six. We're just got it. Okay.
So we have a motion to accept by Mayor Pro Tem Howarth and seconded by Councilmember Lesser.
Motion passes 5-0.
No.
Okay, now it's time for public comments. Members of the public may provide public comments on any matter that is within, within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, including items of the agenda. And if you're going to, if you want to discuss something on a later agenda item, you won't get a chance to do that if you speak now at public comments. Or did I miss, I'm sorry, community announcements. I'm so sorry. So, community announcements, where we have one minute per person. So, Josh?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Josh Murray. I am here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. I'm very excited to announce that we launched our new Connect and Go hotspot lending program. Adult library cardholders can now check out a hotspot they can use at home for up to six weeks at a time. To learn more about the program or to request a hotspot of your own, please visit our website, lacountylibrary.org/hotspot, or you can give us a call at 310-545-8595, or visit us in person at 1320 Highland Avenue. Also, I'd like to remind the community that we will be closed on March 7th, Thursday, for our annual staff development day, and we will resume operations on Friday, March 8th. And of course, all of our downloadable content, like eBooks and audiobooks, are still available on our website, lacountylibrary.org, and I thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. And students from Miracosta, did you have a community announcement?
Hi, I'm Rachel Moglia.
I'm Nate Colligan.
And I'm Neo Nguyen. This week, we started selling tickets to our spring dance. For the first time in Miracosta history, instead of our regular casino night, we're holding an on-campus Vegas night with a silent DJ. The costume dance is going to be held in the Miracosta Gym on Saturday, March 23rd. Students can participate in our costume competition, play casino games, enter raffles, and win high-value prizes, including tickets to our prom in June. In the next two weeks, our esteemed Model United Nations groups are attending two incredible conferences. One group will attend a conference at UC Berkeley from March 8th to March 10th, and the other will travel to New York from March 12th through the 16th. We have a very successful Model UN program, and we know our students will do very well.
And Miracosta will start the scholar wi, sorry, the school-wide Scholar Quiz Tournament on Monday, March 18th, sponsored by Study Hut. After signups open at 6:00 AM, 64 teams signed up in a matter of hours. Our finals will be held in our auditorium in late March. This is a widely anticipated event every year, and all students, participants, and spectators are looking forward to it. Also, the music department is holding the 7th Annual Evening of Eclectic Ensembles concert next week. At this concert, students from the band, orchestra, and choir programs create their own small ensembles, from duets to 30-player orchestras, prepare their own music, and perform as fundraising, as a fundraising event for the music program. The concert will be held in the Small Theater Friday, March 15th at 7:00 PM.
And your name, please?
Oh, sorry. I'm Nate Colligan.
Okay, great.
I also, Your Honor, I heard something about the reason why you have, you have the goggles on. You wanna explain that?
This is a non-school-sponsored event. This is a senior assassin, and these keep you safe, so nobody can get you with a water gun.
I appreciate you wearing those in here.
We're very committed at Miracosta.
That's great.
I'm Neo Nguyen. This past weekend, Miracosta hosted a Winter Guard International Competition, the biggest in the western half of the United States. 66 different teams from multiple states and schools competed on our campus on Saturday and Sunday, including the Winter Guard team from the San Diego State University. The competition has been the best fundraising event for the Miracosta Band Program so far, and it was very, very successful despite the rain on Saturday morning. The same weekend, our award-winning Miracosta Indoor Drumline team traveled to Monrovia High School for a Southern California Percussion Alliance competition. They won first place in their block and second place in the entire competition.
Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you all very much. Well done.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and honorable members of the city council. I'm David Curry, and I'm a senior at Miracosta High School. They wouldn't let me into Miracosta High School with what I've seen here. What great achievers, and congratulations to Claire Kerber. It's just terrific. No, I am a board member of the Manhattan Beach Chamber of Commerce, and I'd like to make an announcement about our State of City, State of the City event, which will be Thursday, March 21st. It will be at the Shade Hotel, and the agenda and speakers. You can learn about the current state of Manhattan Beach, the advancements, and the future projects in the community. Joining the panel are five leaders behind the development and decisions made in the 90266. It'll be David Archer, the President and CEO of the Manhattan Beach Chamber of Commerce, Mayor Joe Franklin, our City Manager Bruce Mo, our Chief of Police Rachel Johnson, and our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. John Boz. So save the date. There's no charge to attend. It'll be in the newly renovated courtyard of the Shade Hotel.
Great, great, terrific. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Nobody told me about that.
They'll tell you on the 22nd.
I'm sure your speech is ready.
There you go.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, Mark Lehman, your Parks and Recreation Director. And I'd like to invite you and the community out to two community input meetings, the first being this Saturday, March 9th, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. It will be at Sand Dune Park, and this will be sharing the schematic concepts from the first meeting. And we will also have Duncan available to entice people to come out.
Good call.
And then our, our second community input meeting will be on Saturday, March 23rd, from 9:00 to 10:00 AM, and that will be at the Polywog Park Dog Run to, this will be the first meeting to gather community input, and hopefully we'll have some dog treats at that one to entice the animals to come out. Beyond that, if you are not able to make either meeting, you can simply email us at mbparksandrec@manhattanbeach.gov, or just simply use the QR code on the postcard or the website, and we had mailers within 1,000 feet for both events. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Lehman. Do we have anything on the?
There's no request on Zoom.
Okay, great. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please. So I want to make an announcement to the public about the South Bay Cities Council of Government's annual general assembly, which is free and open to the public. On Thursday, March 28th, between 9:00 and 3:00 PM, the topic will be, and it'll be, I'll tell you where it is in a moment, artificial intelligence, whether it is a friend or a foe of the South Bay. The title might be a little hyperbolic, but the idea is, how are cities making use of artificial intelligence? How can they integrate it as a tool? What should we be wary of? There are a number of speakers, including our Congressman Ted Lieu and other elected officials. This event is held annually in Carson, at the Carson Community Center. I cannot fully pronounce it, but if you're interested, you can register at southbaycities.org on their website. It includes a free lunch and an interesting conversation. That's it? Thank you. Colleagues, anybody else? So I'd like to make a comment. Recently had meet the, coffee with the mayor at Dunkin' Donuts, and I realize now I should never schedule it after Coffee with a Cop, because I was informed that it was shoulder to shoulder, it was packed for the Coffee with the Cops earlier in the day, and, and it was, which I'm really grateful for, and I really encourage residents to come out to meet your police department. So bravo to you all. Thank you. And it was a lonely day at Dunkin' in the afternoon. Now, we did have one, right? So, so March 12th, it'll be at Pete's Coffee Downtown, and this is from 3:30 until 4:30, and then on March 26th, it'll be back to that aforementioned Dunkin' on 110 North Sepulveda, just across, just south of Target. Thank you. Anybody else? Great, so we'll move on to public comments, and speakers may provide public comments on any matter that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, including items on the agenda. If you speak at public comments, you cannot speak on an agenda item that might come later. So do we have anybody in council? Don't be shy. Come on down. And anybody that wants to follow, please come on down and take a seat down here.
Hello, good evening, and to the mayor, city council, and members of the public. My name is Emily Brochus, and I'm an LCSW Licensed Clinical Social Worker and Director of Community Services at the Beach Cities Health District. I'm really happy to be here today in support of the Manhattan Beach Police Department's proposed program, which you're going to hear about shortly, and to ensure that residents are aware of the services that Beach Cities Health District has to offer, particularly for older adults and those with, living with dementia. So I first want to just thank the city for their generous support for a dedicated care manager, Charlotte Barnett, who I'm happy to have here with me today. Charlotte provides free care management services to older adult residents and adults with disabilities who need more support and services to remain living in their homes. She holds regular office hours at the Jocelyn Center and is always happy to talk to residents in need at the Jocelyn Center or in their homes. She also spends a day or two a week at the fire department as well. We are so proud of our partnership with police and fire and are supportive of the police department's program to support residents with disabilities and dementia. We encourage residents to participate in that program and also take advantage of the services that Beach Cities Health District has to offer. And I have brought our Need Help postcards, which I'll have Charlotte display, which provide information on how to get in contact with us. I'm happy to leave them if you'd like to have them, so please reach out to us with any questions you may have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor Franklin, members of the city council, Rachel Johnson, your police chief. And I'm excited to be before you today, for you to hear a presentation about the program that the police department's going to launch. As the council is aware, part of our two-year strategic plan, and part of our work plan is to have a two-year strategic plan, and we made our strategic plan through talking to members of the community, and also talking to our internal stakeholders at every level of the police department, identifying issues that we would like to work on and kind of guide our, the 2023 and 2024 for the police department. And one of those was a community outreach project that we identified a need for, and so without further ado, I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Steve Kitziros, one of our patrol watch commanders, who's going to talk to you about this program.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Steve Kitziros, and I'm your patrol lieutenant at the Police Department Field Services Bureau. Tonight, I will be talking to you about an exciting new program we are launching at the Manhattan Beach Police Department to further our strategic plan goal of community collaboration and engagement. The purpose of this program is to improve our engagement and communication with our special needs residents. Specifically, our police department is looking to improve, I'm sorry, improve our emergency response and address the unique needs of our community members to communicate with us. These next few slides will have some statistics about disability prevalence in California and Los Angeles County. I know as a patrol watch commander, we come into contact with people with special needs often, which include adults with dementia and Alzheimer's. The Manhattan Beach Police Department is looking to partner with the Friendship Foundation to implement this program. There are nearly 900 students who participate in the Friendship Foundation's clubs throughout the Manhattan Beach Unified School District. The police department is also going to partner with our city's older adult coordinators to register our elderly citizens with special needs. We're also going to coordinate, as you just met, with the Community Services Division of the Beach Cities Health District to help us register the Manhattan Beach clients who qualify for the program and help us get the word out. Here's what the proposal is. This program will allow our community members to place the stickers on the front doors of their cars, windows, residents, phones, anywhere they desire, that will their officers or the fire department personnel of their disability or special need. We're gonna, we will talk to our stakeholders and register our community members who fit these criteria. To be clear, this is an opt-in registration program. Our objectives are to enhance community safety and understanding between the cities, the first responders and citizens with disabilities, to affect communication in the fields between our officers and our residents with disabilities, emergency preparedness for first responders, both police and fire, and to build community trust in our town. Before here's the, the form that we plan on using. The way the police department plans on implementing this, the way, the way the citizens can get these stickers is through this opt-in process, where members will fill out a form that goes to our database for law enforcement personnel. The stickers will also be provided to the Beach Cities Health District, the Manhattan Beach Older Adult Program, and the Friendship Foundation Clubs for those who just wish to display them and not opt in, so at least they have an option. An example I'd like to give to you where the stickers might have been helpful. In December, I responded, along with other officers, to a call in Manhattan Beach of domestic violence. It came out where, the call came out where a husband had pushed the wife to the ground. When officers arrived, neither the husband or the wife were in front of the driveway. They were, they went back into the house. When we knocked on the door, both the husband and wife were obviously crying and very shook up, very nervous of, of our presence. They were mostly nervous because it was the son, who was 6'1", 250 pounds, who had pushed the, the mother to the ground in the driveway. And they were very nervous because of our, of how the police might have reacted had neither of them been, had the husband not been home, or if, if the son came out first. And what I told them was of this project that the police department was working on, if this sticker had been on the window prior to us coming, we would, we would have known, we would have had a game plan. Hey, guys, look, there's someone with special needs here, someone with a disability. So if someone comes out and acting somewhat odd, we know what we're dealing with. We can prepare better. So that's, that's just one aspect of this great program. Or if someone gets lost out, out in the field, and we see this circle sticker on their cell phone, we know that they're most likely registered, and we can hopefully find them, bring them back home. The fiscal impact, pretty minimal. $2,000 for, we ordered 2,000 stickers, I apologize, for $1,615. Our recommendation to you, city council, is we recommend further discussion and planning to implement this registration system, collaborating closely with our community stakeholders and experts in disability services. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
No questions. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Wonderful.
And Chief. All right. Any more public comments in chambers? How about Zoom?
We do have one. Lieutenant Harding.
Hello, this is Lieutenant Colonel Harding, retired. I want to speak on Agenda Item Number Nine. Is my voice coming through?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I just want to be short and sweet. I support the resolution for Manhattan Beach to be able to prosecute misdemeanors, and I believe that's going to be spoken about later, Agenda Item Number Nine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments?
We also have Heather Kim on Zoom.
Hi, I'm also in support of this resolution, so that we'll be able to prosecute our own misdemeanors, and I think we need three votes for anything to happen today, and I, I'm hoping that, that we will have those, not just the three votes, but five votes, so that we can send a clear message to George Gascón and his office, and all the criminals that try to come here and play their games. We can send a very clear message that that is not going to be tolerated in our town. And, and I also know that Council, Councilwoman Hope, you previously supported Gascón, but you no longer, so I'm, I'm really hoping we count on your support for this resolution. And obviously, Mayor Franklin have always been pro-public safety. I can count on you. I believe, you know, Councilmember Steven-
Destroy your life.
So close. You're almost there.
For, you know, judgeship, but we've been, oh, hello, can you hear me?
You're cutting in and out.
Yeah, you're cutting in and out.
Going in and out.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, and so, and also with Councilman Napolitano, okay, hold on, let me see if I can get closer. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Hello?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry, I don't know why I can't, I can't hear you guys very well, but, okay, anyways, I'm just hoping that you- I'm just hoping that you guys will unanimously support this. I think Councilman Lesser, you have a really good head on your shoulders, and I trust that you will do the right thing. I know previously, Councilman Montgomery, you were, you know, I don't know why you didn't support the last resolution against Gaskon, and you were hoping that, you know, being nice and talking about it will, will help, but we know that's not going to help. It hasn't helped, and we've been begging for Gaskon to let us prosecute. So at this point, you know, it would send a very clear message, and it would really make me, as a business owner and as a resident, a mother of four kids here, feel a lot safer knowing that criminals are not going to get away since they commit. It will help me to sleep better at night, knowing, you know, my husband, when he comes home late from work sometimes, that, you know, it'll just make us all feel safer because there is something that we can do about the crime in our city. And I don't care what anybody says. People are trying to gaslight us and say that crime is down. That's a lie. That is a lie, because we live it all the time here. And I have lived here for 20, 21, 22 years, and I can tell you, there is a very big difference from when I came here till now. And it has, George Gaskon has single-handedly, in recent years, really, really cut, been a big problem by being against all the victims. So I, you know, urge you guys all five zero on this resolution, which is a no-brainer if you care about Manhattan Beach and the citizens here. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, I'm going, if there's nobody else, no, we're going to close public comments and move on to Item H, Consent Calendar. I have a motion to approve it with the exception of Item Number Six.
No, it was Item Number Four was pulled.
Yeah, I just registered a no vote on Number Six.
Steve was voted down.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. Number Four was pulled. All right, that's, thank you. Okay, with the exception of Item Number Four. Thank you.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. So Item Number Four?
So Item Number Four concerns consideration of general guidelines concerning city advisory committees. It applies to more than just one committee, but the one I'm most concerned with is this, how this proposed guidelines would apply to the senior advisory commission, committee, excuse me. I have comments more than questions, but I'm just curious if council wants a presentation from staff that I, who I alerted that this item would be pulled?
No.
No?
The only question I would have would be, what is their own staggered term limits they would impose on them?
So my understanding, and I've had an engagement with Patricia Mattson, as well as our Assistant City Manager, George Gabriel, the terms of the senior advisor committee are just two years, correct?
That's currently how their bylaws are.
And my understanding of what the guidelines would impose would be term limits of no more than two terms. However, the body itself could adopt its own bylaws and perhaps have, perhaps have longer terms, but at a minimum, they'd have to adopt revised bylaws. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So my larger issue here is that the senior advisory commission, committee is different than the other groups, and can you name those other groups that would be subject to these guidelines?
So the other ones we've identified are the Art in Public Places Committee, Sustainability Task Force, the Outdoor Dining Task Force, and then any other future bodies created in, in the future.
This group is different, and in my comments, I'll explain why, but we haven't taken public comment on this. I just want to say what my proposal would be was to allow staff to explore some other options as opposed to the strict application of these guidelines to the senior advisory committee, and I wanted to give them a little more time and exempt the senior advisory committee for now from these guidelines, and that's what I'll be asking for.
And just to comment on that, the senior advisory committee, they do plan on coming back with revised bylaws to address the terms. And so in that, they could suggest something different than the policy. It would just need to be adopted by City Council upon receiving those revised bylaws.
Question, Your Honor, I mean, is there any urgency to any of this? Should we just not continue this item until the bylaws come out?
Yeah, I believe we can do that, but Councilmember Montgomery has a comment?
I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've watched this committee and others to have, for example, other committee assignments that we have have short, defined terms, shelf life. You don't run forever for anything. This one's been overlooked, but I've been here, what, 15 years on council? And loosey-goosey is like, come on, we should have done this 15 years ago, and that's on us that we didn't do it. I'm okay with staggered terms. What I'm not okay with is lack of definition. If you say you want staggered terms because you want to keep institutional knowledge, I love that idea, but there has to be an endpoint. I don't want to hear people telling me, oh, there's no one else applied. Well, A, no one knew about it, and B, that they don't really do, it doesn't matter much what you say or do, give others a chance to have an opportunity to step up. Now, with term limits, you can see what exactly what you're going to get. Now someone actually defined it and put it in a box, now everybody could see all at one time and go from there. So if you want to defer the decision until they bring back better guidelines, fine. But I agree, this is one of the ones that needs definition, like everything else we've done, they can't escape that box. It needs to put the same rules and then bring it back.
Oh, sorry. You have a question? Go ahead, I'll after you.
So I have a question. So what, how does the, the, this committee handle terms now? Are they voted on and?
Senior Advisory Committee?
Yeah, Senior Advisor Committee?
They currently follow their own process where I believe they review the applications and then provide their recommendations to the Parks and Recreation Director, and then he makes the final appointment based off of those recommendations.
Okay, and is the length of term two years then for?
The, in their bylaws, they currently only state that the term length is two years. They do not address term limits at this point in time.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, so if I was on the committee, then two years is up, and then people will apply, and then that person who was on the committee would just reapply and see if they get appointed again, right?
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem?
No, it's not correct. It's not what it says. If your term is up, your term is up. You cannot reapply again, like all the committees that we have. The way it stands now, you can do that, but it's not what's suggested going forward. It's, you have a set term going forward. Then you roll off and someone else comes in, like our noble commission, like Planet Commission does, everybody else. But as of today, it just stays in motion. Nobody leaves, it stays in there.
But, but there is a vote in between, right?
There's no vote.
No. Or?
It's an appointment. That's, I mean, this is the question we're all trying to figure out. So if you want to answer that, and then I have something else.
Yeah. The question to, is it self-appointment with ratification, or I guess a blessing from the director and nothing ever comes to council or anything like that?
No council oversight.
No council oversight, and is it advertised so that it's fair, so people, because I have no idea.
Is there a secret vote? I have no idea.
No.
What is going on?
That is correct. So it is a secret ballot, ballot among senior advisory committee, and then I'm simply tallying the votes and reporting those back.
So they vote?
Correct.
And there's five people on that committee?
Nine.
Nine? Sorry, guys.
At times.
At times. So they vote on who's going to come in?
Correct. And then I simply tally up the votes with the team and, and then endorse those.
This, okay, I, so I'm questioning why are we, so two things come to mind, and we either, we have, why are we even talking about bylaws? I mean, this, we, this is almost like a secret ballot and just a contest for those people on that committee to vote for. Why are we even overseeing it? On the other hand, why wouldn't we then set up a very public process for it if we were going to be saying, you know, we want you to put bylaws in? You see my que, I don't, I'm not maybe articulating, but it seems a little funky.
Okay. Councilmember Lesser?
Well, it's really more of a comment, and I wanted to defer that and see if there's any public input, but I would simply say, to Councilmember Montgomery's and the Mayor Protem's point, the idea is to adopt some guidelines, to have some consistency among the advisory bodies, including the senior advisory committee. But the senior advisory committee does more than just a typical commission. Many of its members are actively involved in the day-to-day operations of the Older Adult Program and all their activities at the Jocelyn Center, teaching classes, setting up, and really augmenting what the staff does. And as a result, their members have been really terribly important in some of the advice that's come out of that body. And so that's why I think it would be helpful to have this study a little further as to what type of limits could be imposed consistent with guidelines going forward as opposed to this guidelines, which is why I pulled it, which would impose the limit on what is presently in place, which is two years. If they adopted two term limits, it would be two years, they could take a term off, a full year off, if I understand the guidelines correctly, and then reapply, but it would have some greater impact on this body more than any. That's why.
Councilmember Napolitan?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, you know, curious here, because we're talking about, well, it's not this, it's not that, and yet what is it in the terms of the city and how we have other groups? I mean, the Sustainability Task Force is something that is appointed, but they, we say task force, but their job is kind of unending as well. We always rely on them, and whoever's appointed to that for technical expertise and other things to inform some of the things we do. I mean, at one point, we did talk about a commission, and I just, I'm not trying to rock the boat of anything that's working here, but I just want to make sure that it's working the best for everybody and formalize some rules. So I don't know what other cities do with regards to, you know, groups like this. If we have any information, I'd love to know that as well. You know, I just want to make sure that everyone is comfortable, including the seniors who are part of this group, that, you know, they have their, their opportunities and voices heard as well. I don't know what best practice would be here. You know, things seem to be working well, so, you know, is this a situation of it's not broken, don't fix it? I don't know. I just would like to know more, though.
So City Manager, can we bring this back after some?
We can. I mean, another alternative is to adopt this or approve it as it is and come back with the specific bylaws for the senior advisory committee that can address what you're talking about. So approve these for the other bodies and the SAC, but come back with more specifics for SAC.
I'm fine with that.
Just black, Councilmember Lesser?
See if there's any public input, and then we can maybe talk about it a little further.
Okay. Public comments?
I'm sorry, I might add that the SAC was consulted on this and it was discussed with them.
Okay. Any comments in chambers? Any comments online?
There's no requests online.
Okay, we'll close public comments and.
Your Honor, one follow-up question is, so why is it here then if the SAC has seen and, how long has this been working on, how come we don't have those bylaws now?
The senior advisory committee does have bylaws in place already. They were adopted in 2022. Just with these proposed guidelines, they would need to revise their bylaws to include some type of term limit.
Right, but they just haven't decided upon what those are yet?
All they, they just stayed, remained silent on term limit, but they did include term length, which was that two-year term.
I understand then at the time, but I mean, in preparation, knowing this meeting was going to take place, and my understanding is that they're going to be forthcoming at some point with new bylaws, but how come we don't have those tonight?
I think partially because they wanted to see how this went tonight, and then they could adopt their bylaws to conform with this policy, or where needed, modify it.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'm fine with approving it as is for everybody else, and we'll give additional time, I guess, for the senior advisory committee.
Your Honor, make a motion. I like the definition part of it. I agree, the motion will be to approve all others except SAC, senior advisory committee, come back with their bylaws, whether it comes from them or from us, but at least we get definition one way or the other, that we can go from there. That's my motion.
Okay, and we have a motion from Councilmember Richard Montgomery and seconded by Mayor Protem Hoorth. May we vote?
And to be, to clarify, because it's a little different than City Manager Mo said, is that, I mean, the motion's the same that Richard said, but it's, we are not approving anything with the SAC now. We are saying, come back to us.
Well, friendly amendment, why don't we put a, you know, four weeks or something?
The, if I may, the, we were speaking with the Parks and Recreation Department earlier today, and they have a projected date to return on May 21st with the revised bylaws.
Why so long?
They wanted, they have one meeting with the senior advisory committee coming up in March, and then they wanted one additional meeting in April just to, you know, clarify any other outstanding items with the revised bylaws.
Just for clarification, if we pull the SAC out of this policy, we're going to have to come back with the policy again to have it adopted, whereas if you adopt it tonight and then you adjust the bylaws, we're only adjusting the bylaws.
That's, that's where I was trying to get clarity. Okay, so.
I guess I'd like to give a grace period for the senior advisory committee. My understanding is staff did make a presentation about the proposed guidelines, and I'm not sure if they were very enthusiastic about the idea of term limits, were they?
That's one of the reasons why they proposed coming back with their own staggered terms.
So that's why I'm wanting to give a little more time for them to voice concerns, and moreover, to clarify how they can voice their concerns. We do have guidelines with regard to commissioners addressing council, and I think there was some confusion as to how they could express their concerns, and they didn't know how to do so. So that's another reason why I wanted to give them a little more time before this is imposed. So, Mr. City Manager, how could this motion proceed? Get the guidelines in place, but give some deference to the senior advisory committee and the Parks and Rec Department to come up with the bylaws and come back?
Yeah, I think what we can do is have the council approve the policy tonight and give us direction for a timeframe in which the bylaws can be adjusted for SAC. Come back to you to have those approved, to adjust to their needs.
I'll restate my motion to make it very clear. We'll approve everybody tonight. Senior Advisory Committee has had the long time to study this, shouldn't be a shocker to anybody, but we need definition. It can't be opened into where the committee controls its own future. That's not their job. So all of the committees here will be, and task force, approved tonight and bring back earliest convenience SAC, and the objections they have or comments they want to make, they've had time, they can always email us. I did receive one email. It is like they couldn't reach out and touch us, but okay, we'll give them until May to figure this out. No later than. That's my motion.
Well, and so if there's something the council wants us to focus on in terms of those term limits that we can take back to the SAC, which I seem to recall was one of the genesis of this whole discussion of why it's on the work plan, it would be helpful tonight if you tell us that so that we can focus. So if you've got a proposal on.
Hear from them.
What that, that term limit is, that you want to get, we can take that back.
I think we'd like to hear from them, obviously, on the term limits. How long are those terms? What would the process be? Does, is there any proposed change in the appointment process? Is there any change in the nature of this body beyond the bylaws? But I'm happy to go along with the motion for now and move this forward.
I mean, I think what's being proposed for everybody else is a baseline for consideration, and then I'm more than open to being convinced why, you know, that's not good, and they have their own ideas as to what's better.
Okay.
Does that help? No?
I think it does.
The most important aspect, I'd say, Your Honor, is that the definition is clear. To want us moved here from Kansas yesterday to tomorrow, and I want to see you join SAC, I know what the rules are, I know what the terms are, I know what it is. It's clear, defined, and run by the city, controlled by the department head, not controlled internally by my own group that reappoints me every two years automatically. That's my point.
That sounds like a big change in how they've done it.
Exactly.
Well, that's, that's kind of what you're looking for, isn't it? I mean, because if we're talking about this, a change to what has been done, that's different than them just coming back with their bylaws, because they may not be trying to change them, so.
I hear that. Let's hear them say, let's try, why do you want to keep reappointing yourself? There's someone else's chance, that's the whole point. No other commission appoints itself. Not, anything in the city appoints itself. This is the only one that's self-directed. Why?
Maybe we could have a status report in April?
Sure.
So that if council is not in agreement with any direction that the SAC is going by that time, then council will provide direction.
That's a good idea.
End with that?
They're bringing some new blood, look out.
Should we change, is, we voted on a motion that wasn't.
Didn't vote yet.
We hadn't voted.
We didn't vote. Our screens are still up.
Maybe you did. I haven't voted.
My, my, okay, the screens are still up, but I'm, the motion that we are, were voting on, could vote on, was very different. So should we make?
You don't want to rephrase my motion again?
I think you need to redo a new motion and take this off.
All of the committees and. All of the committees and Task Force are going to be voted on tonight, clearly, as listed in the staff report. They will bring back in April to council an update on all, on just the Senior Advisory Committee. We can hear what's going on, what that group may or may not like about this. Staggered terms is one thing I personally like going forward. And we set our own definitions from that point in April. We'll have heard by then, by then. We'll vote on, in their presentation, they want it in May, they want us to come back in May. Then we'll hear it again in council full in May. Anybody have questions about that one? Is that clear enough?
Well, from what I heard, we're adopting it for everybody tonight.
Correct.
So there's no carve-out for the SAC.
We have, we were, they want us to do that because we would have to bring them all back.
Oh, okay.
So we'll, we'll do that, but we want SAC to come back.
So they could be amended in the future?
Yes.
Okay. Got it.
We're anticipating through the bylaws.
By Councilmember Montgomery and seconded by Councilmember Lesser.
All good points.
Just process stuff.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Okay, so now we move on to general business. Item number nine, Consideration of Resolution Sponsoring and Supporting Assembly Bill 2309, which authorizes the city attorney of any general law city or charter city to prosecute state misdemeanors. City Manager Mo?
Yes, George Gabriel will be making a presentation here, and I'd like to thank George for his hard work on this with Representative or Assembly Member Marisucci's office. He's been working very diligently with the staff there, and he'll give you a report. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor Franklin, members of the City Council, George Gabriel, Assistant to the City Manager. So I gave a smaller report to the City Council at the City Manager, within the City Manager Report section of the meeting, the last meeting. But just by way of background, I just want to indicate that, you know, since March 2021, the city has been exploring ways to prosecute state misdemeanors and trying to obtain the district attorney's consent, because there is a government code, the state of California, that limits the ability of state, of general law cities, such as the City of Manhattan Beach, to prosecute state misdemeanors. And so at the July 8th, 2023 meeting, City Council directed staff to work with the city's elected state legislators and request a change in the California Government Code to allow cities to prosecute state misdemeanors when a county district attorney declines to prosecute. So in the months thereafter, staff had been working with State Senator Ben Allen and State Assembly Member Marisucci's office. And finally, on February 12th, Assembly Bill 2309 was introduced by Assembly Member Marisucci, which would remove the consent requirement and instead authorize the city attorney of any general law city or charter city to prosecute any misdemeanor committed within the city arising out of a violation of state law. So following introduction of this, after the report I gave, staff met with Assembly Member Marisucci's office to kind of understand what the next steps going forward are. And one of the things that came up is, would we like to sponsor the bill? With sponsoring a bill, there's a couple of things that we wanted to get clarification from council to see, one, would you like to support the bill? And two, would you like to sponsor it? And so when we inquired as what sponsoring really means, there's three critical things that City Council should be aware of. And so one is serving as the official contact and answering inquiries of elected officials from their offices, because a lot of elected officials want to know what the genesis of this is and why we, as a city, are pursuing this. Testifying before elected officials in support of the legislation, so that means maybe going to Sacramento or possibly going to meetings with the League of California Cities or whoever it may be. And then third is requesting gathering letters from local stakeholders in support of the legislation. So that could be contacting the California Contract Cities Conference, Association, I should say. Sorry, the conference is coming up. And so given the potential for significant amounts of staff time and ancillary costs associated with it, staff felt it was appropriate to request the City Council officially sponsor and support the legislation, AB 2309. So with that in consideration, we're available for any questions.
Thank you, George. Questions?
Yeah, just a couple. I mean, I'll have some comments after we take public, you know, comments, et cetera. I'm making an assumption, but who do you think would be the main staff liaison or the main staff person? George?
That would be George.
That's what I thought. I mean, and I, and I think it's, it's, it's a wonderful opportunity. Well, sorry, I'll make my comments after public comments. But I'm, I'm glad that you brought this to our attention, because, you know, there's, there will be costs associated, there will be your time. And I would also suggest to my colleagues that there will be our time required. It's, and it's slightly different, I think, and I appreciate the callers who called in support of us doing this, but I want them to understand that if we decide to support it and co-sponsor it, it doesn't mean it's law. It doesn't mean it's a law already. You know, what this is, is trying to get this assembly bill through the assembly. So I guess a question I would have is, will you be working, George, with Assembly Mayor Marisucci's legislative staff so that we have a calendar, so that we understand if it's in committee, out of committee, you know, et cetera, et cetera? Is that the kind of, yeah?
Yeah, and the fact that at the meeting we had last week, you kind of discussed some of the parameters and some of the logistics going forward. And one of the key things to be aware of is that next month is when committee hearings start, and this has already been referred to the Committee on Public Safety.
Great.
And so I don't think, I think the committee, a date has been set, not exactly a time. And so the committee will hear it, and thereafter, I think it needs to either get out of committee sometime in April or May. And so I'll give a definitive breakdown of that to the City Council if they would like.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Lesser?
Just a process point, which I wanted to make for my, our colleagues, and that is, Mayor Protem Haworth and I serve on the Legislative Advocacy Committee of the Council, and staff and we had a very brief conversation about whether or not consistent with the work plan, which already has our city in favor of this, we could just go ahead and have staff agree to sponsor this. But in conversation with staff, it was decided that this really needs to be a full decision of the entire council, particularly because, as George just indicated, there might be some staff time involved. My own question has to do with something that we've talked about, George, and that has to do with, let's say we had a different prosecutor responsible for LA County, and one who adhered to the law, and a bunch of independent cities established their own prosecutors, and came up with a far more progressive standpoint. In other words, the exact opposite of what many would say is happening today. How do you avoid the patchwork? And I imagine this would be a question that some legislators would ask. You and I have talked about other charter cities that already have the ability to do prosecution and the percentage of the population that is represented by cities that have their own prosecutorial authority. But what is the counterargument to the concern that this could create a patchwork throughout our county and other counties throughout the state, a prosecutorial service?
Let me just say to my caller here, I don't think George can answer that question, or should he even try to?
He has data. He has a good answer.
But I would also say, though, when you say that, you know, what if there's progress, what was the opposite of what we're looking to do? You wouldn't file it with the DA to begin with. You'd never bring the case. You'd start at the police department level and say, "Police department don't enforce misdemeanors anymore," or give citation, administrative citations, instead of giving them, handing them over to the DA. I mean, it wouldn't ever reach the DA if you want to make sure they're not prosecuted.
Should I attempt to answer that question?
I certainly have a softball pitch to you to answer, so go ahead.
You know, we, we were aware of that argument, and it's something that actually the DA's office brought up when we were requesting consent, and they were concerned about equity concerns associated with the different cities in the county. I can't speak to what would happen across the state. I haven't dug that deep into it. But in terms of looking at LA County, one thing we're aware of is that seven, 10 out of the 88 cities in LA County have the ability to prosecute state misdemeanors. Of those 10 cities, it represents about 50% of the population of LA County. So given that, I would, what I would say or potentially counter those concerns if the City Council is supportive of this bill, and I want to be respectful of that, is that the, that parity already exists somewhat, that there is an inequity that occurs, because as of right now, 50% of the county has the ability or the authority to prosecute state misdemeanors while the other half does not.
Thank you.
That's a good point. Okay. So, so George, what do you envision in terms of council participation? Would it be one of us, two of us, all five of us that need to get involved? Would you recommend, you know, committee or, what do we call it?
Subcommittee?
Yeah, subcommittee?
SAC.
Well, obviously, I think that would be up to the City Council, but we do, I would say that we do have two vehicles, obviously, to address that. Obviously, the mayor is the city's unofficial spokesperson, handles matters like this in terms of testifying and so forth and media interviews. But we also do have our Legislative Ad Hoc Subcommittee that also addresses it, which consists of Councilmember Lesser and Mayor Protem Haworth. So obviously, we'd be receptive to any direction on that, but go ahead, Bruce.
Well, and the other thing is, we'll certainly provide talking points to the entire council, and it may be that you divide and conquer this, that not all of you, or that at some point, all of you get involved, depending on the venue and who you're speaking to. So it doesn't necessarily have to be limited to two of you. You can all get involved.
And just one more question is, would other cities be in this position to be able to do this work as well, to help sponsor this? And there'd be co-sponsors or?
You know, when we talked to Assembly Member, Assembly Member Marisucci's office, they didn't indicate co-sponsors, but I'm sure, I know I have seen co-sponsors on bills before. I don't know how it would work in this case, but I'm sure it's something they'd be, they'd be receptive to. Then again, what I will say is that there, we are, if a city does support this, and we would be looking for letters of support from other cities.
Right, right.
So while, I know sponsorship is...
You'd be building a coalition.
Yes, yeah.
So I want to differentiate sponsorship versus support. We, support would definitely be solicited.
Okay, good. Okay. Mayor Protem?
I'll wait till after public comment.
Okay. Any more questions?
No.
Okay, so open up public comments for this. Anybody here want to?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Just listening to this, it's really interesting. I, I think, as I reflect on it, you know, if you look at what our constituents want, they want the misdemeanor charges to be supported by you guys. To represent them, I think you guys need to support this. And so I endorse this, and I hope that you will support it.
Your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Stefan Kampa.
Right, thank you. Anybody else in chambers? Oh, we got one?
Hi, Jill Lampkin, Downtown Business and Professional Association. Mayor, City Council, I'm sure it is no surprise that I think this would be fantastic. I was actually on a legislative call today as well, where this was discussed with Marisucci's office. And I said, this is, you know, a great, hopefully, tonight, we will have news that it will be handled differently, you know, going forward with someone new at the county. But should this situation ever happen again, at least it gives us an alternate route should we need it. So our small businesses highly support this, this change or this, I don't know, what do you call it? An initiative of support?
Legislation.
Legislation, there we go. Thank you. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Jill. Anybody on Zoom?
Yes, somebody with the username iPad7.
Hi, good evening, City Council. This is Heidi Reiden, and as a resident, I'm deeply concerned about crime. So I'm asking City Council to support this agenda item. I was extremely disappointed in city leadership for opting out of the zero veil lawsuit when dozens of cities in LA County decided to stay, even if we stayed on principle, as it sends a strong message to criminals and Gascon and indicates Manhattan Beach is not totally affected by the radical rogue virus promoting lawlessness, the virus which clearly drives and reunited our local anti-public safety activist group. Their members like myself are blessed to live in this beautiful city, a city filled with families and children. But unlike them, I value law and order. I do not advocate for criminality or decriminalization of crime or zero veil. A no vote on this agenda item is another vote in favor of Gascon, criminals, violence, lawlessness, and not to mention a slap in Moby PD's face. Up close with this, on Christmas Eve, 60-year-old Junko Hanafuso took her small dog for a walk on the El Camino campus. Mrs. Hanafuso didn't return home because she was bludgeoned to death with a sledgehammer by a homeless man named Jeffrey Davis. Jeffrey had a long rap sheet. He would have been in jail if not for Gascon and Gascon's reclassification of crime, but he was not in jail. He was on our streets and free to murder, which he did in the most brutal fashion imaginable. And it's noteworthy to mention that Jeffrey Davis was living on our streets last summer, in which I had emailed council and city manager, City Manager Ann George Gabriel about him. That was the same individual who murdered this woman. May she rest in peace. So please support this agenda item. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Heidi.
There's no additional requests.
Okay, so let's close public comments and colleagues.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, sorry, I just...
That's okay.
We, we have a little screen up here, so I, yeah, I don't, well, I don't think there's any doubt that we're going to support this. First of all, I want to thank our Assembly Member Almarit Suci for taking the lead on this very important assembly bill. This legislation is something that all of us are crying out for. And I think it shows courage and leadership for him to initiate this. And I think it's really important for us to join him in sponsoring this and to show that we are leaders on this effort, this effort which actually is meaningful and can provide us with actual tools, as opposed to, you know, a lawsuit that we knew was not going to have any effect. One of the things that I know, I think it was you, Mr. Mayor, who was asking, you know, well, will other cities, can they sponsor it? And we will have to build a coalition. We will have to do some work in asking, you know, setting up meetings or making phone calls and saying, will you sign this? And getting them to sign it. We will have to, you know, reach out to Jill and the Downtown Business Association, say we want a letter from your organization, we want emails from every one of your members. Here's the, you know, draft. And those letters will go, not just to Assembly Member Marisucci's office, but everybody on the Public Safety Committee that the bill is going to start in, because that's how it works. So it's a political process, and there are all kinds of things that, you know, will be out of everybody's control, but we have to put the full court press on. And so everybody who's been asking us to do something, you know, and every time we say blame Sacramento, not incorrectly, by the way, here's our chance. If we're going to take this on, we have to all step up and, and, you know, do it. So I've made a motion to support this, and I'm, I'm proud to do so.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Montgomery?
Thank you, Your Honor. Those of you not familiar with this process, it started back 2021. This isn't anything new. Here we are, three years later, talking about the same thing. I wish, while I credit Marisucci's office for bringing it to the point now, I wish it had happened three years earlier. But here we are. This is a long shot, folks. As everybody told you, this is one person, one member represents the South Bay, trying to convince the rest of the Assembly Members to support this. So we're on an island compared to the rest of the state. We know that. It's a long shot, but it's a shot.
Fair point.
And as Mayor Protem mentioned, we have to build Assembly, an outreach team. I can tell, as President of Independent City Association, ICA, whose only mission is public safety, ICA will jump behind this. I imagine contract cities would jump behind this. We'll speak to the League Board and let them hear about what we're trying to do. In fact, I don't see any state that would be opposed to this. Even the charter cities that have that 50% rule right in LA County today, they wouldn't be opposed to this. The flip side of the argument you heard earlier, what happens if we get someone else progressive that wants to revise... that wants to revise the rule for what we have now? Well, what if here, she's out of office in the next term, right back where we were before? So we need statewide, we need to have the ability here to control our own destiny and not rely on Sacramento going forward. If this passes once out of Sacramento, we have our own future. We control our own fate, so, which we do not have now and have not have. People that were here in '21 saw this council try to work with the DA Gascon's team. In fact, Mayor, former Mayor Stern and I were working with the team after the first time of letter of confidence to work for a one-year trial period and let Manhattan Beach, work with Redondo Beach, and work as a team to control our misdemeanors and house with Redondo. And why I didn't vote for that second censure, which went absolutely nowhere, was because I thought, when you're working with someone, you don't cut their legs out from under them. You stick with it until the process goes through. Didn't work the way we wanted it to. Nonetheless, we got farther than ever before discussing a one-year trial period where we could control misdemeanors, and that was going forward. So tonight, today, folks, election day. Talking to us about what someone else is doing, that's what ballot boxes for. But this point is that we go to Sacramento. So I credit Al Marisucci and his team, and George for getting us here. We should all be behind it, and we'll take more work than it sounds like.
Yeah.
But we're lucky, we have the tools here. And this team here, and where I sit as ICA president and contract cities with Amy and David, Stephen, Joe, we can all pitch in and make and go up to Sacramento and reach out. It's not just them, it's everybody else in Sacramento, all the way up to the governor and say, this is important to us, to the South Bay. We need to have this happen so we don't constantly hear about it. We control our own future. So this is one we, we should not hesitate anyone to get involved here, but I, as Mayor Protam said, we have a long ways to go. The good news is, this is not a year project. It's a sprint from now until it takes the holiday break. So we can get this done and get an answer and drive it forward ourselves. A lot of push, a lot of time, and if the money cost is an issue, it's something well worth it, because we need to drive it forward. So glad to second it and go from there.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Napol...
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with what's been said. I fully support this. Full credit to Assemblymember Marisucci for picking this up and putting it back in our laps. He's got limited staff, they can only do so much, they're busy with other things, and they need help to get these things passed. And they also need to have us convince our, our colleagues and get collaboration, get cooperation from other cities in the area to support this, so that they know this is something that cities want. You know, I, I don't see this as a detriment in any way to a district attorney, because what it says, the language as it is now, of course, it can change, but the language as it is now, it doesn't take away the district attorney's ability to prosecute misdemeanors. It just allows cities to do it if the DA chooses not to. And there might be instances where the hardcore, most conservative district attorney decides not to prosecute something because they don't feel they have the evidence, whereas the city might. The city can still pick that up and pursue it if they want to. That is up to them, and if, and then it's left to the judge to decide whether they meet the burden of proof or not. But it does not take away the ability of district attorney to prosecute anything. It, it's up to the cities always, department, to decide what to bring to the district attorney and then goes on to court. But this doesn't take away, it only, to me, enhances the ability of cities to have local control and to prosecute misdemeanors, state misdemeanors, that it otherwise wouldn't be able to, simply because the district attorney has the full authority, the only authority to do that now. So I think it's a plus for local control, and I think we should pursue it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Lesser?
I echo the comments of my colleagues. I'm supportive of this measure. I am appreciative of Assemblymember Marisucci carrying this bill and seeking our sponsorship. I think we can offer our own individual experience of what Special Directive 20-07 has meant. It was a directive that was adopted by this district attorney very early in his term that limited the number of misdemeanor prosecutions. I just want to pick up on something Councilmember Montgomery said. This is not new. We will be talking later this evening about our legislative platform. One of the items is to support efforts to remove the district attorney's consent requirement and instead authorize the city attorney of any general law city or charter city to prosecute, which they already can do, prosecute any misdemeanor committed within the city arising out of violation of state law. So this is consistent with what we have wanted to do. It is a tool that cities would have. I felt it was important to get on the record the argument that is likely to be made against this proposal about how there'll be inconsistent prosecutions if you allow every general law city to do it, and it's important to make that case going forward. So I'm supportive.
Great, thank you. I'll wrap it up here. The, the first line in the background in the, in the staff report is, since March 2021, the city has been exploring ways to prosecute state misdemeanors following the district attorney's directives, limiting their prosecution of certain misdemeanors. Now, a lot of us here follow these elections, and nobody heard about these directives before the election. And it happened, and they were announced, I don't know, was it a week after that these self-imposed directives that District Attorney Gascon passed on to his staff about no prosecution, flat out no prosecution of misdemeanors? These misdemeanors affect us here in Manhattan Beach, our quality of life, safety, security, peace of mind. And I too want to thank Assembly, Assemblyman Al Marisucci for, for seeing the wisdom of this and seeing that general law cities were up against it in terms of trying to manage this wave of crime that everybody was witnessing. And the bad guys can read. They understand. They go to places that don't have prosecution of misdemeanors in order to commit their crimes. And I have to commend the police department, the Manhattan Beach Police Department, for going out every day, risking their lives and, and, and doing their job in a professional manner to protect us, to get these criminals off the street. Now we need to keep them off the street. It, it is such a frustrating thing for them, but every day you see them out there, working their hardest to protect the residents of Manhattan Beach. And by, by de facto, also protecting residents of other cities, because the criminals go from city to city. And if you, and if we don't put them into jail, then they're free to continue committing crimes in other cities that don't have this capability. I joined with Councilmember Lesser. We both responded to an invitation by Gascon's office to come up there and talk with them. And to your credit, Councilmember Lesser, you had some relationship with some of George Gascon's staff from prior work, and, and you managed to carve out an opportunity to put together for chronic offenders, the opportunity to, to have the district attorney's office prosecute those. And I think they came and they bore fruit with two, three prosecutions that took these criminals off the street. But it took, it took a bunch, okay? It took a bunch to put those together in order for them to act. So while we're appreciative of that, it's still all the other misdemeanors and the criminals that we want to get, get through the criminal justice process. So I will be supporting this as well. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yeah.
I don't know what the motion is, but I'm going to add a friendly amendment to it, or whether or not, I've heard it yet. And that is that, you know, each one of us has only so much time in the day, staff, George, he's a master of many things, we put, we task him with. He does a great job of it, but his time is limited as well. This requires, lawmaking in Sacramento requires a special relationship and knowledge, and I don't think that we can or will be able to do this without the help of a lobbyist to guide the bloodsport that is lawmaking in Sacramento. So I really think we need to find someone rather quickly to engage so that they can help George, help us, guide us between talking points, who to talk to, what committees are going to hear this, when they're going to hear it, and everything else. Unless we have that expertise, I don't think we're going to be successful. And, you know, when people, why'd you get out of that lawsuit? Well, because it wasn't going to work, because we can take that money and put it to something here that we really want to do and really will work.
Mm-hmm. Great. And Councilmember Montgomery?
I'll just add to, great point, having our own person focus Sacramento. But it's also our residents, as Jill said, the downtown business, it's one team. Every resident called in or emails us, why don't you do something about it? Well, this is your chance, something about it. You can email Al and every Assemblymember and Senator you know, residents, vote. Businesses, vote. So Sacramento pays attention. If you keep hitting them and hitting them over and over with emails, even they accept faxes still in Sacramento. So all that works. It's a team effort. It's not just us, our lobbyists, or Jill, or George, it's everyone that can hear our voices. We need all of you to email your people and fax their people, let them know that this is important to them. But I agree with the idea of our own lobbyists focused.
I, I will accept that as a friendly motion, because I, I absolutely agree. I mean, it's, a lobbyist will give us a plan and actually give us the emails of, here are the Assemblymembers on the Public Safety Committee, contact these people, here's what you're saying to them, and then we can send that out to our folks. So I would accept that as a friendly amendment. We know people, I mean, we've interviewed some great people before, so we can suggest some...
You know a guy?
I know a guy. I got a guy. I got a guy who's got a girl, who's got a, yeah.
City Attorney Burrow, did you want to make a comment?
I just wanted to mention that the city manager has the authority up to $75,000 to hire this lobbyist.
Great.
It doesn't necessarily have to be in the motion, but you could give that direction. The city manager can do that without having it to come back to the council.
Great. Consider that direction given.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so then it's back to the original motion, which is just to sponsor and support the bill.
Let's call for it.
We also might, though, want to appoint a subcommittee to work with the city manager in choosing the lobbyist.
Be glad to.
Yeah.
I defer to the mayor, I'm just saying that should, he makes the appointments.
First of all, let's ask for volunteers.
Hi.
We have two volunteers.
Unless, unless somebody else really was dying to, and then, but I'm quicker and, you know, arm wrestle. I'm taking it as a no.
I, I felt you holding down my hand, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, that, that makes perfect sense, but, you know, and that's, and then we'll, we'll discuss the subcommittee to actually take it all out.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, so just procedurally have the council vote on the resolution, and then part two would be the subcommittee. The mayor can appoint the subcommittee, and three would be direct the city manager to, with the subcommittee, hire a lobbyist.
So should we call for the question first to get this motion done?
Get the resolution, yes.
Resolution?
Okay.
Motion passes, 5-0.
So Mayor, do you want to appoint a subcommittee?
Yes, so I move that we form a subcommittee consisting of Mayor Protam Hoerth and Councilmember Montgomery to assist the city manager in the selection of a, of a lobbyist.
Yes, so no motions required.
Oh, okay.
You have the authority to do that.
Okay.
So, but point of clarification, is that also a subcommittee that would be spearheading all the other activity around this, this bill, not just the lobbyists, but any other types of activities you want us to engage in?
Actually, I want to, to put my hat in the ring for that.
Well, we're all going to be doing stuff, I think, and if you want to be the point of contact, that's fine, but we're all going to be doing it.
Okay, I'm just thinking in terms of...
Once we get the lobbyist.
Why don't, why don't we start with the subcommittee to help with the selection of the lobbyist, and then you can come back with efforts and dividing up what the workload will be.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Great. So moves, so passed.
And you gave that direction to the city manager, so we're, we're good on this item.
Bueno.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number 10, a quarterly update on the city's homelessness initiatives.
Every time is hands.
Back again.
Assistant to the city manager, George Gabriel.
Honorable Mayor Franklin, a member of the City Council. On a quarterly basis, we come back with updates on homelessness initiatives, and so tonight I'm providing that update. So to jump right into it, we had a homeless count back in January of 2024, and the homeless count yielded this, these unofficial results. And what you'll see is two unsheltered persons were counted, as well as two within the vehicles and dwellings counted category. So two individuals were counted, as well as two cars. And I'm saying that this is the unofficial breakdown also, because LSA no longer releases the city-level specific results, so this is data that we gathered from the count that night. I can go into other details as to why that occurs, but I won't spare.
That's because nobody likes how they come up with a number. I mean, no city wants to hear it.
Two and a half, ten, yeah.
So what's our homeless count and what's been occurring over the years? As you can tell, and I think the council has seen this graph at nauseam, but I just wanted to showcase that the count has been going steadily down from 41 down to two. And what I will say, and just in full transparency, the last two years are considered the unofficial numbers, and we've been utilizing the individuals counted, not necessarily the vehicles and dwellings. An argument could be made that there could be individuals in there, which would thereby increase it, but in the full spirit of transparency, I just wanted to say that. And so, and I should say, the council should really be commended for this. This is a reflection of the investment that the council has taken in homeless resources. You know, you have, you have grant-funded resources, but also general fund resources. We contracted with shared collaborative housing, and then we also contract with Harbor Interface Services for a dedicated outreach navigator. Homeless census, so this is an item that I came in November of 2023 with, and so the city of Redondo Beach contracts with CityNet for a homeless demographic survey. There was some interest from council on that survey, and therefore I just wanted to touch base on what the cost of that looked like, because the COG was exploring funding that. And so based off what they were able to obtain in December of 2023, two proposals were given. Obviously, this proposal is for a lot of cities, both those proposals, but on a per-city basis, it comes out to about 35,000 to 45,000 a city. So this, these are pretty high, and so the COG is, continues to explore this service and is looking to identify funding and see if they could use, you know, grant funds potentially for it. So what have we been doing?
I thought that was Austin Powers.
Yeah. So we, like I said earlier, we have our dedicated outreach navigator, and this is a reflection of her work. So in about 13 months' worth of work, 477 interactions, 97 participants served, 21 number of interim housing referrals attained, 10 stable housing placements, and then of those, 21, 13 have been in the share system. And so one thing that was mentioned at the November meeting was that we're, we transitioned from the city funding out of the general fund, the shared collaborative housing, to the COG funding. And I just wanted to report back that the transition has been very smooth, and we're very grateful for the COG kicking in and offering it on a regional basis. They funded about nine new individuals since September of 2023, and that's amounted to about $13,000 in, in cost savings to the city. And additionally, one thing that was unanticipated, it's actually provided flexibility with housing more than the allotted five individuals. So there's been times where we may have two people in for one month, but they provided the flexibility. So I think this past month, we had seven individuals that our Housing App, Outreach Navigator connected to. So one thing I did want to provide an update on was Measure H. So you'll recall that in March 2017, there was a 10-year quarter cent sales tax increase to fund homeless services. Efforts are currently underway to place a new measure for the November 2024 ballot and extend the, the 10-year quarter cent sales tax. There are currently signatures being circulated by a local nonprofit, United Way, to, to collect signatures, but the measure has not officially qualified yet at the county level. But just so that the council is aware, there's some important provisions that's related to what we call Measure H 2.0. And so one, or the first one being, Measure H is scheduled to expire in March 2021. And so one, or the first one being Measure H is scheduled to expire in March 2027. So they're addressing this somewhat early, but it does not have a sunset clause and can only be repealed by the voters. So that's very different from the first iteration, which is a 10-year term. Second one is Measure H 2.0 does not impact the sales tax limit imposed by the state. There was a special carve-out provision by the state legislature to basically go beyond the 10.25 cap that's imposed by the state. Third, Measure H 2.0 does not have a direct allocation for cities to cover costs of homeless services. That was quite disappointing based off conversations we had with other cities. Because just as the city of Manhattan Beach, we took on some general fund costs in order to fund homeless services. And so as of right now, the current iteration of Measure H 2.0 does not have a direct allocation. It would probably function in a similar manner to what goes on today, which is an allocation to the COG, which the COG then distributes to cities. So homeless court and care court, a work plan item was, was added by the city council to create a homeless court diversion program. We amended the agreement with R W G to add prosecution services. While this was going on, Care Court, which was some legislation that was supported by the city of Manhattan Beach by virtue of the city council, was also starting in December 2023. And we wanted to see how that process kind of played out. And so the COG actually had a really good presentation that they provided to all the South Bay cities in February 11th of 2024. The acting senior deputy director of reentry services from the Department of Mental Health provided that. And it was actually a really good learning opportunity. And so I wanted to kind of give a very quick primer on that to the city council because I know that the city council is interested in what Care Court could do in terms of providing some level of homeless court services. So in essence, Care Court has some very strict criteria. And these are all the requirements to be eligible for Care Court. And one of the things that I thought was particularly interesting was a diagnosis of schizophrenia and not being bipolar. There's a specific carve-out in the Care Court legislation that doesn't allow for that. You know, also you see the individual's mental health substantially deteriorating. Participation in a care plan is the least restrictive alternative. And the individuals likely to benefit from participation in a care plan. All these sorts of requirements are listed in the legislation. And therefore, they are being also implemented by the county Department of Mental Health. And I'm only saying this because there is a lot of particularities. And therefore, it reduces the likelihood that we can find somebody that can abide by these requirements.
Can I ask, Mr. Mayor, may I ask just a quick question, just on this topic?
Sure.
It's also, though, it's not necessarily that a city refers somebody to the care court. It's a family member, a roommate.
The city can, or like, I believe a local police department can, as well as a family member, though. So it does provide both those avenues.
Appreciate that.
And so the other thing that I wanted to deliver to the city council is that this is a long process as well with the care court. It could take upwards to a year, and there can be additional extensions with this. And so while we look at Care Court as a potential solution, and it still can be, there are particularities that the council should be aware of if we were to take advantage of this new feature of homeless court services. So the other thing I wanted to inform the city council is the regional mental health crisis response. So I believe I reported back to the city council on this, I believe in fall of 2022, and that there were efforts being made at a regional level to create like a mental health urgent response network. And so the idea is, is that you'd have an alternative crisis response. And that crisis response would also assist the housing navigator, connect them with services, then get it into potential housing opportunities, and then obviously ultimately reach a stable housing placement. And this is to provide an immediate response so that there's not as much of a dependence on local police departments to assist. So some cities have made some efforts, and the COG has definitely been assisting some cities in trying to organize this. And so there is a draft, you know, plan, I should say it's draft because this is something that the COG has in mind in order to roll out the mental health crisis response in different phases. And so phase one includes Hermosa Beach. And you may say, why Hermosa first? And that's completely understandable, but mainly it's because they are funded. They got a million-dollar grant from Congressman Ted Lieu's office. And they are actively trying to roll out that program right now, I believe. Ronson's nodding yes, so yes. Phase two is Redondo Beach. Redondo Beach has been interested in this in some time. And given that they have a sizable portion of the Beach City's homeless population, it makes some sense there. And then phase three would include Manhattan Beach and El Segundo. And then phase four would be other police departments within the South Bay. And so the Beach City is kind of serving as a leader in this space, trying to create an alternative crisis response program to assist homeless individuals. But I will say that this comes at a steep cost. So a million dollars was the amount that Hermosa Beach got. And that probably funds a year, maybe two years for this service. And these are all the costs that are listed down. You have a project manager, you have a supervisor, case managers, you have mental health clinicians, peer support specialists. And that doesn't even include a lot of the hard costs associated with, you know, the van and, you know, vehicle leases and insurance, utilities, whatever it may be. So the startup costs are a million. Redondo Beach would probably, you probably need about 600,000. And then if we went to Manhattan and El Segundo, it'd be another 500,000. And that's probably for a year of service. So this is all in the, you know, planning phase, and nothing has been determined as of yet. But I just wanted to give awareness to the city council so they are aware of it. And so tonight, one of the things that we kind of want to do structurally is have some contract amendments. And this is a little different from November. In November, I asked for general fund resources. This is grant-funded resources. So this is basically to increase the fiscal authority. You'll recall that there was an MOU between the COG and all the Beach Cities, as well as the city, for 216,000. In order to ensure that there's fiscal authority or fiscal resources there, we're looking for an additional authority of 28,000 to ensure there's funding until November of 2024. And I just want to emphasize, this is not general fund resources. This is all grant-funded resources that the COG is providing. This is just a mechanical thing within city government that we just have to increase the fiscal authority in order to expand and get the revenues from the COG. So with that being said, staff recommends that the city council receive the report detailing the efforts, adopt the resolution approving amendment number five with Harbor Interface Services for the grant-funded services, reciprocally making, adopting another resolution approving an amendment for the MOU with the COG. In order to receive those funds, appropriate the approximate 28,000 from the general fund balance and adjust revenues by the same amount with the expectation that we will be reimbursed. And then finally authorize the city manager as needs to execute both agreements. That will conclude my presentation. And I should say that Ronson from the COG is here as well. And we're very appreciative of him being here, as well as his housing project locator, Keenan.
Great, well, thank you. Questions, colleagues?
Sorry to make you sit through this.
One question, Your Honor.
Yes.
I'm not sure.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Thank you, George, or Ronson's question. But on page eight, staff report, under future Measure H, your second bullet point, to place a measure on the November 24 ballot to extend the 10-year one-quarter sales tax to help fund housing and support services for the county's homeless population. I'm wondering, that's still the game plan. If Prop 1 passes tonight or tomorrow, 6.4 billion dollar bond. It says to adjust mental issues and add 10,000 new beds. Doesn't say where in the state that's going to go. We have the biggest population, so let Ronson come address that, because I figured he'd jump out of his chair for this one.
Just to get the blood flowing on his legs again.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, good evening. Ronson, chief from the South Bay Cities Council of Governments, senior project manager of homeless services and senior services. Just a quick correction, too. It's going to be a half cent sales tax, not a quarter cent.
That makes it feel better.
It's going up, actually.
Yeah.
And part of the reason why it's going up is they're actually going to have carve-outs for housing. So if you remember, the county passed a measure to create a countywide affordable housing trust fund. And so now they're going to try to raise more money to seed that trust fund. And so that's the component of it. The answer to your question on whether or not, if Prop 1 passes, we still need this? The answer is yes, because Prop 1 is addressing the mental health bed crisis that we have. Whereas the Measure H is being used for services, not just in mental health, obviously, but also substance use folks that are in permanent support housing and for programs like the SHARE program, the case workers that we have, and things like that.
I envision it, so that would be an overlap. If it passes tonight, and we see that 6.4 billion dollar bond come through, I imagine some of that money will adjust mental health, will take some of that pressure off and adjust part of the homeless population you're trying to take care of. I get that part. So that number should, we should still go back to the quarter cent versus half cent. But thank you for letting us know, I appreciate that. Thank you. Nothing further, Your Honor.
Thank you. Congress, Congress. Aspirations. Councilmember, sir.
Happens every two years, though.
This would either be for George or for Ronson. You did talk about this prospective regional mental health crisis response and our being in the third phase. I just wanted to better understand funding, particularly because we're uncertain about what's going to happen with this bond measure. I'm just curious about the prospect of other funding measures to help pay for our participation.
Obviously, we're going to be looking for grant funding, obviously with Ronson and Measure H funds. What I will say, there's something unique about the way Redondo Beach is funded. There's actually HealthMet, I believe? HealthMet, which is an insurance agency, health insurance agency, is that they are going to be funding up to 500,000 of the city of Redondo Beach's expenditures towards this program. And so that's quite out of the box in terms of what funding, because traditionally we rely on either general fund or grant funds. But I assume that we'll be looking for something quite similar, and we'll be tapping into, you know, private resources like that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, yes.
One more question, while you're there.
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell, the money that comes from everywhere else, the COG, do our county supervisors also provide money at our city's request to help boost our shortfalls? Or is that totally separate, and we haven't asked her office yet?
We have not submitted a request directly to her office yet. I believe that there are special project funding that, that the supervisor's office has provided to other cities. And I think of one that I can remember more recently is the city of Redondo Beach, especially with their Pallet Shelter project. But we have not made any requests to Supervisor Holly Mitchell's office.
You talking about the discretionary funds?
Yes, that's what I'm thinking of. Supervisor can use discretionary funding. They did a Pallet Shelter Redondo, I think we could ask Supervisor Mitchell now for that shortfall we're talking about. Thank you.
Okay, George? So with the, again, the focus on that regional mental health crisis response, can you give us just an idea, in the South Bay, what percentage of the homeless suffer from mental health issues, do you think? Is it the majority? It could be kind of a broad stroke?
I'm going to delegate this one to Ronson, seeing as that he oversees a lot of the South Bay's homeless population.
And I also want to thank you, Ronson, for all your help as well.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, that's always a hard question. The easy answer is, if you believe the statistics that LSA puts out, it's around 30%. But, yeah, but, you know, UCLA came out with a conflicting number several years ago and pegged it much higher, at 50 to 60%. It's hard because mental health is such a broad spectrum, including stress, right? Stress could be considered a mental health issue. So it's a really hard thing to peg. What more recent studies have suggested, though, is what's the cause and effect? Do you have mental health and then become homeless? Or do you become homeless and then have mental health issues? And the more recent studies are showing that it's actually you become homeless or housing is stressed, and then you start developing mental health issues. The reason for that is because if you look at states like Texas and other states across the country, they have very strong mental health problems. Dallas, Texas has very high suicide rates, for example. But they don't have a homelessness problem. So that's kind of the correlations they're looking at. Hopefully, that answers your question.
But in any case, they end up being mental health, having mental health issues.
Yeah, yeah.
I explained.
And then the longer they're on the streets, the worse it gets.
Right, okay.
And that's why we're looking at the alternative crisis response.
And then also, too, as long as we have you here, in our SPA service program area?
Yeah.
Eight, okay. And we're eight?
Yes.
Okay. So what percentage of the successful housing placements, you know, is Manhattan Beach responsible for? Is it?
The percentage, that number is really hard to peg.
I mean, generally, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we see the chart.
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
The percentage opposed to that.
Yeah, I mean, because I see here, oops, on the slide, slide on page, slide number six, you know, that we've, Manhattan Beach in the last year, well, January to January, 21 number of interim housing referrals attained and 13 placed into SHARE. I'm just wondering overall from the, and what does SPA eat in compass, the area?
So, I mean, SPA encompasses the, basically, entire South Bay region, to answer that question. In terms of what the city of Manhattan Beach does compared to the other cities, I don't have all of the city's data, but what I could say, and maybe this is a good opportunity for Ronson to highlight, is in terms of the SHARE housing resource, we account for a good portion of placements in that. And I think there's actually some data that Ronson actually highlighted, and I think he may have handouts for that.
And there's nine SHARE beds now, or 13?
No, we've placed, over the past five months, we've placed, no, over the past year, we've placed 13 individuals into SHARE housing.
And we had, we had three originally, then we did five ourselves. Three, we funded ourselves, five, we funded ourselves, and then COG has nine.
We started with two, we increased it to five. And now Ronson's, or I shouldn't say Ronson, the COG's contract with SHARE allows us the ability to exceed five at times.
Yeah, okay. Gotcha.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I think Ronson wants to provide another comment.
Yeah, if you can just entertain me one second. I do want to share some really positive data with you on the SHARE thing. As you know, the COG adopted this from Manhattan Beach. And then we also spread it across the region. So it's not just Manhattan Beach, but other cities are now participating in it. And so we, unfortunately, we couldn't make the agenda, but we have that, that chart that we were passing out. Keenan will kind of quickly go over some of the numbers. But I just want to say, we also added an employment component to it. So we're working now for the South Bay Workforce Investment Board to get people in SHARE to jobs. And that's going really well. Keenan, you want?
Oh, that's great.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Honorable Mayor, Council, Keenan Leary, South Bay COG, Housing Project Coordinator. So as you can see in the slide, kind of in front of you there, like George mentioned, Manhattan Beach is really leading the South Bay in referrals into this program. We're very thankful that, honestly, Manhattan Beach introduced us to SHARE collaborative housing because we've been able to expand the program to the rest of the South Bay cities.
Can I just stop you here? Can you give the acronym, what the acronym SHARE means?
Yeah, I actually don't, I'm not positive if it's actually, is it a?
Supportive. Supportive housing and Stefan?
I'm going to get that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Because I just don't know. I mean, I used to know it, but I don't, can't pull it out, so.
If you don't already have the idea, single-family home, four or five bedrooms, that, you know, individual roommates split, split those rooms up. But we've seen really good, promising data that 57% of folks in this program now have been collected or connected to employment, you know, and for most of those folks, that's within three months of being in the homes. And SHARE's number for their overall program is just 41%. So in the South Bay, we're connecting with the South Bay Workforce Investment Board, and we're seeing some really good results of connecting people to employment thus far. I also wanted to just commend the contracted homeless outreach coordinator, Myra. You know, I work with her directly day to day, helping folks get into these housing placements. And I just have seen an unrivaled amount of care for folks even after they get housed. We're on the phone constantly coordinating to make sure that there aren't any conflicts in the homes and that people are staying housed. Because a lot of times, the system, the way it's set up, just incentivize people to get in the door, and then they might return to the place where they are on the streets, you know, if that housing placement doesn't go well. And I think she does a very good job of making sure people stay housed in these placements.
Okay, great, thank you. Appreciate that, that update. Appreciate that, that update. And so, George, so we also have some police officers who are trained, right, as well?
Yes.
For encountering and assisting the homeless?
If I could just say one thing before I forget it, it's self-help, recovery, and recovery exchange.
Oh, self-help? Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay.
With regard to our police officers, they really are, you know, one of the crux of why this, why this works so well. They provide Myra assistance on an ongoing basis with conducting this, making referrals, being near her if a situation may be considered dangerous at any point. And we have our homeless outreach team within our police department that consists of a lieutenant, a sergeant, and two police officers that are really essential to making this whole program really fulfilling.
Okay, great. Thank you. No more questions? Anybody else? Okay, so I'd like to open it to public comment? Oh, yeah, public comments? Anybody here?
So Stefan Kampa, Honorable Mayor, and city council members. Probably a question for you, George. I was reading through all this stuff yesterday, and it's a lot of information here. But one question I had on the CARE court, it says, "Response must meet all of these criteria." And my question was, who makes this decision and when? My concern is, when you look at all these considerations or criteria, they're kind of at a point where it's almost past the point, you know? And we have people, you know, so who's make this? And how do we get them in this fast enough? Okay? That's what I'd really like to understand and share a little bit more about. Because if I look around, when I drive around, these people need care now. And who's out there making the call to get them in the door so start taking care of them?
Great. Thank you, Stefan. Your Honor?
Public comments done.
Okay. Anybody online?
No.
No? Okay. So closing public comments. And Councilmember Lesser.
First and foremost, I want to commend our own staff, George Gabriel, and the COG, the COG team led by Ronson. I mean, in staffing for what we have for our community governments, we have competent individuals and those with heart and dedication. And really, what I've seen, particularly being the delegate to the COG, of Ronson doing that extra bit to really help these programs region-wide, really goes many miles. And the data shows how effective we've been, and we are now a leader for our region with regard to these homeless actions. So I've made a motion to move forward with this item, which would include, subject to comments by my colleagues, just approving Amendment Number 5 with the Harbor Interfaith Services for the Measure H grant-funded homeless case management and housing navigation services. Also, the resolution approving Amendment Number 2 to the Memorandum of Understanding with the COG for Measure H grant funding to provide homeless case management services. Do you need more specificity in the motion?
Just on appropriation of funds.
Appropriation of fund for the first item is $27,832. That is the resolution approving Amendment Number 5 with Harbor Interfaith. And it's $27,832 for the consideration of the Amendment Number 2 to the MOU with the COG.
Great.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I was throwing amendment to that, and that we also have staff make up that letter to ask Supervisor Mitchell for additional funds separate from COG.
Great idea. Accepted.
I'd support all that.
Okay, anybody?
I'm in agreement.
Okay. So I have some comments to make on this, because I've seen firsthand just how effectively, I'm just going to call it the Manhattan Beach model, works with the, you know, with the backup and support of the COG. It's a tough, tough, tough job. It is really grueling. It's mentally tough, it's physically tough. We have Myra, who, you know, works exclusively for the, for the city. We started off paying her, you know, we had some grant funds, but we had to split up the housing navigator. And the council voted to hire a navigator exclusively for our use and paid with our general fund money, and that was Myra. And she's extremely dedicated. She's come up with some great ideas, some great programs. We've integrated, as well, homeless outreach to our...
Choking up, I know.
To our fantastic, I don't know.
Cough drops over here.
To our fantastic, yeah, I guess I got to use them, though. To our, to our fantastic team is the 501(c)(3) nonprofit, MBSafe. The acronym, Manhattan Beach Safe Alternatives for Everyone. And this is another dedicated team of individuals, volunteers, who are out there helping to spot the homeless, to reach out to the homeless, to care for them, to gain their trust, because trust is so important. And this is where it's so tough, because these individuals are moving around, and so they're constantly trying to keep in touch with them. But it's that level of attention and trust building that really contributes to those great numbers that you see there. So the whole, you know, the whole team effort. I'd like to see this expanded throughout, at least the South Bay, and then also to the county. But it takes dedication, it takes money. I think the money is there. My goodness, we've been paying into this fund, and we hear about the hundreds and hundreds of million dollars that have been spent. But I, but dare I say that maybe it wasn't spent so wisely, or maybe it could have been spent better? And I think this is a model for other cities to, to look at, to at least learn about, so that we can help these individuals. I asked about the mental illness, because a good number are affected by mental illness. And that requires yet even another level of care for our unhoused. So I'm, of course, going to support the motion here, but also just whatever we can do, and also, you know, to reach out to County Supervisor Mitchell, whatever we can do to replicate this model, because it seems to work. And it's not just a wealthy city that can afford to pay. We saw, we, you know, our volunteers and our staff showed us that with a dedicated housing navigator, for example, you know? Because the timeliness of it is so important. Someone spots, you know, an unhoused individual, and by the time someone gets to that person, they may have moved. Okay? So the speediness to react, I mean, I witnessed myself just this amazing example. I was driving down Highland about 10 days ago, and there was a distressed person walking southbound on Highland, in the middle of the road, in the middle of the lane. And, you know, people were trying to swerve around, and I, you know, so I pulled over in order to dispatch, you know, MBPD, because this is definitely an emergency situation. And before I could even finish that, that phone call, a car whizzed around me and pulled up behind this individual, and it was Myra, who had seen the same thing that I had seen. And without having to be called, without having to go through that process, was one step ahead. Now, you know, that's probably an extreme example, but it's not uncommon. So I guess in my very long-winded way here, we care about these people, the money's there, the will has to be there, you have to, you know, you have to have the will as a council to do something about this. And then you can, then you can enjoy results that we see here. So I just want to applaud everybody that's involved with that and fully support your efforts.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the work of our police department. The Manhattan Beach Police Department and its officers are specially trained, and it's one of the reasons why we have the success that we do, is because of their dedication, their sensitivity, and their awareness in how they approach the homeless issue. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion? And a vote?
Motion passes 5-0.
Great. Thank you, colleagues. Okay, moving on. Does anybody need a little break?
I'm going to step off.
Okay, so maybe a quick five-minute break?
Good.
So... Okay, moving on. Item number 11, consideration of a resolution adopting the 2024 legislative platform. City Manager Mo?
George has a brief presentation to see.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Here it is. You worked hard on it.
Honorable Mayor Franklin, Member of the City Council, George Gabriel, once again. Tonight, we're considering the resolution adopting the 2024 legislative platform. This is as a result of direction from the City Council to develop it and appoint two members to a legislative ad hoc subcommittee at the December 2023 meeting. Councilmember Holworth and Mayor, Councilmember Lesser and Mayor Proton Holworth are members assigned to this. We drafted a legislative platform document that was reviewed, and we hope that it is to the entire council's liking, which outlines principles, a process for, for the consideration of future bills. And therefore, staff recommends that the City Council adopt Resolution 24-0019, adopting the 2024 legislative platform, which will be approved on an annual basis by the City Council going forward. That will conclude my report.
Well done. Great. Thank you. Questions? Say none. We'll move on to public comments in chambers.
No requests on Zoom?
No one on Zoom? Okay, we'll close public comments. Comments, colleagues?
No, it looks like you've made a motion, Mr. Mayor. Why don't you state your motion?
So the motion is to receive and, oh, consideration of a resolution adopting the 2024 legislative platform on number 24-0049.
19. 0019? I thought, I thought you said 49.
Oh, I'm sorry. 0019. I was looking up at the top. Yeah, 0019. Thank you. Made by Mayor Franklin and seconded by Councilmember Montgomery. Vote?
Motion passes 5-0.
Great. Thank you. Any AB 1, 2, 3, 4 reports?
Not for me.
Not for me.
Say none.
Sadly, the city did not pay for my trip to New York, but.
Well, what business were you doing?
Yeah, exactly right.
Any future agenda items? Item number M?
None tonight.
Say none. City Manager report?
No report tonight. Thank you.
Okay, City Attorney report?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. So we are going.
Sorry.
Give me just a second here.
That's government property.
Working.
I'm surprised.
So we are going to adjourn this evening in memory of two individuals. So if I could ask everybody to stand. So first is, do we have a photo yet?
Yeah.
Okay, Neil Miller. So Neil Miller was born on July 26, 1948, in Oildale, California. He peacefully departed this life on November 20, 2023, with his loving family at his side. Neil was only 75 years old. Mel, I'm sorry, Neil began his public service career in 1976 with the City of Torrance, and in 1991, he joined the City of Manhattan Beach as Public Services Director. He served two years in that position before being named the Public Works Director in 1993, where he last, where he last served before his retirement in 2007. After retiring, Neil moved to Temecula and spent most of his time pursuing his very diverse interests and hobbies, spending time with friends and family, and attending his grandchildren's activities. He found solace in golfing, a pastime he enjoyed immensely, and loved taking annual golf trips with his friends. He enjoyed staying active with many different outdoor exercises. He has survived, I'm sorry, activities. Neil is survived by his brothers Dennis Miller and Ronald, Ronald Miller, and his sister Julie Embelton, his daughters Christina Pinto and Ariane Miller, his grandchildren Maurice Gutierrez, Mitchell Gutierrez, Brianna Pinto, and Matthew Miller. His memory will also be treasured by his loving partner, Erica Bustamante. Let me ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much, and thank you, Neil, for all your great work here in Manhattan Beach. We sadly announced the passing of Cedric "Beastie" Jones, owner of Manhattan Beach's Beastie Gym and a community philanthropist, who passed away suddenly on October 16, 2023, at the age of 46. The former professional dancer-turned-boxer was born September 14, 1977, in Macon, Georgia. Cedric was widely known for his outreach to the most vulnerable communities, visiting detention centers and shelters, feeding the homeless during the COVID-19 pandemic, and finding ways to mentor and inspire at-risk youth. Cedric was founder of the, of the Be Moved Foundation, which works to guide underprivileged youth from their formative years into young adulthood. He was a man on a mission, a mission to help young boys become men and leaders in their communities. Cedric helped countless boys and their families through hardship, providing a safe place with numerous free resources. He supported and believed in each of these boys, supporting them to graduate from high school, and for many, to become the first in their families to graduate, graduate with a university degree. Be Moved cultivates future citizens, community members, fathers, and leaders. Cedric had many on-screen credits, including Marshall County, Southpaw, The Magnificent Seven, Fight Your Way Out, Hold'em, Princess of the Row. His most recent on-screen appearances were in The Terminal, List, Season One, opposite Chris Pratt, Constance Wu, Taylor Kitsch, and more. And most recently, he was in the 2022 movie Emancipation, starring Will Smith. He was a loving father, devoted husband, caring son, brother, community leader, and incredible friend who inspired others. He genuinely wanted everyone to become the best version of themselves. He is survived by his wife, Latasha Barbie-Jones, and three young children, Brooklyn, Braxton, and Bryston. Have a moment of silence, please. Thank you, and thank you, Cedric, for all your good, good work here in Manhattan Beach and in the surrounding areas. So we're going to adjourn to a closed session on Tuesday, March 19, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. in City Council chambers. Thank you.